FYI, because this is not applied to Littleton. We're in a rural area. If you really want to protect especially agriculture, right? Ranch land, road crop, 10 acres is, is, they go higher. So, just FYI, because this is not so much. Now, the question is, why is that in zoning?
I was gonna say.
What areas that...
Do we even need? I mean, we have A1 that right now is, I think the only area that's A1 is South Park. But then that leads to your conversation of, does it become a park?
Should it be rezoned to west?
Yes, rezoned to open space, rezoned to power work. You know, and not have an A1 because that's not where we are. But I mean, as you can see from this map, we still have quite a bit of residential living today.
And so, these are, these are kind of scenarios about, you know, something like this piece. Depending on, I believe that's well over an acre. That could be subdivided into two lots theoretically, if the minimum is only .6.
Sure.
So, just have to think about those scenarios. Or, is that, is that a direction? I mean, some people have said, is that, long-term, is that pattern what will hold? One thing about this list, I've given this example before. When we do a suburban residential zoning district, we often give all three options, by right. Somebody can come in, if you meet the zoning, get your building permit. So, the baseline in that type of district might be that R1, half an acre. That's your baseline, smallest lot you might be able to do. In some communities, it's smaller than that. But then, if you want to cluster, you get an open space trade-off. If you're putting more units on a property, the open space has to increase. So, the development footprint is decreasing. Because people tend to think of density as just take any area of land, divide it up into the minimum lot size. How many lots can I get at that? And that's how development is drawn. How many lots can I squeeze in there based on .6 acres or... So, the example I gave one time with our Realtors group, when we talked to them was, one thing I've been trying to convey, discussions when we put the future land use map up there and all that yellow suburban residential, is that doesn't necessarily mean that area will never change. It's not locked in. As I say, people could come in based on this zoning and say, I want to buy up a cluster of lots and re-subdivide, replat, and do another arrangement.
Say, if that happens, let's say you've got, you own five acres in the RL, which requires two acres. Currently, you could, you could subdivide that and still make the, the existing zoning district of two acres. You could get two houses and you'd have a, an acre left over.
You can make width, lot width and sub-heights.
So, that, you know, so, are you saying, do anything down the road with the zoning code, you're saying, you know, and if you have five acres in a, in an RL, you could have a baseline of a half acre, which isn't currently what we do in Littleton. Unless you go to a PD or go through the agony of trying to get that, just good luck.
No, I was going more toward just taking the R1. Forget about the one above that, just that R1. If you had residential suburban on the future land use map, and now there's a residential suburban zoning category versus the way it is now, where it's just only five acre, that's what you got to work with. That might be, there might be a baseline, lot size slightly smaller than that. And, or, if you want to go to smaller lots, there's got to be more open space and more buffering around the edges. The example I gave to the Realtors group is Heritage High School. Here's three lots here that are facing outward toward Windermere. They're not internal to the neighborhood. Somebody could come along someday and buy up those three houses and put those lots together. Here's a larger site to work with now. What we do in some instances, one of your options is, you could do more than three units, more than just three houses there, but they would be more concentrated in the middle of the site, and there would be generous open space around it to maintain the estate character around substantial buffering on the property lines. And, and I use this example, not that, you know, we know that Windermere doesn't continue, isn't a major street, but when you have a street that has a high school across the street, and this is maybe not the street it was 30 years ago, that's how an area like this can transition. These people will think differently, that that's not a lot that makes sense 20 years, that lot size, or there's not as much of a market for it. So, giving some flexibility in the zoning to do other types of housing, but maintain the generously open character of that area.
I've noticed in the last week or two, the shift is now getting way up high to, we're getting into some, some different items that really is more when we start working on the zoning code itself.
Thank you for mentioning that.
This is, I'm sorry.
Thank you for mentioning.
Yeah, this is a general discussion, but it doesn't, this, these kinds of finite items, small items, don't occur. Comp plan, they're down the road.
Exactly. I wanted to make that point, that we're getting into some numbers here tonight, that that's, these are zoning discussions, but it's chicken or the egg, the plan needs to set the general direction.
Yep, yep.
That an estate area is meant to be large lot. And what is a large lot? In many communities, one acre is a good baseline. Or, if, if you have a pattern that's larger than .6, but somebody could come in and grab a large lot and subdivide it down to six, is that what we really want in that area?
But they'd have to rezone, if it's their RL, they'd have to rezon it to RE in order to get the .61.
Yes, we gotta, gotta take a turn to the zoning. That's why I was thinking about, which to me is...
That one's already RE.
Okay, that's already RE. Okay.
That's three.
Those three are already RE.
Okay. And, you know, this is a good example.
Yeah, that could happen.
Backwards, that the RE allows the smaller lot size, and these are the smaller lots, some larger ones are in the RL.
So, yeah.
It could change backwards to me.
Okay.
So, that, getting to a comp plan level, what do we want those zoning districts to, the actual districts themselves? Do we need some of these districts so we can make recommendations on a comp plan level? You know, narrow down to residential. You have residential, you have a minimum lot size for a range, or we can have more of the character, but what approach do we want to take?
Well, this approach that we could take with nine people due to, there's also the neighbors obviously to, to consider, and what do they want for, in surrounding the high school? And we'll find out what they want during these various meetings this summer, open houses and what have you. So, it's, it's not quite our decision to make, we have a say in it, but other parties...
It will be in about three or four months when it goes to council.
Yep.
Is there any, I don't know if there's ever been a discussion about someday Heritage High School being there? I mean, my kids went there, I had a lot of heritage, but that area is really, it's so residential, it's very difficult to navigate. And I always thought, someday that school probably ought not to be there, honestly. And I don't know if that's part of the conversation. I have no idea if that's ever any kind of play for the schools, but...
I know we've had...
That's a prime piece of ground, I think.
My, my understanding is, it's some of the other levels, elementary and middle school, some just thinking of repurposing, but I don't see that going away. It's just such an anchor for that area. But, Mark, if I could use this opportunity, this is a great example of, on the draft future land use map that's out there, and actually, it's, it's not on there right now, it was on the existing land use, showed this building, county building, churches, hospitals as public slash institutional, kind of a unique category. They can be things that draw a lot of people, like a regional hospital, these types of public assembly buildings, but it's also public works yard. So, the point I wanted to bring up tonight is, we were starting to put an institutional category on the future land use map. We don't always do that. And the thinking is, and it especially comes up with churches, as you know, churches at some point can pick up and say, we're moving elsewhere, we're going to a bigger site, we're going, we're going out of business frankly, in some cases, but, and it's when those church sites are on your major quarters, and your future land use map is institutional, well now what do you do? So, on the zoning side, you know, churches are often a use within residential zoning at a certain scale.
Schools.
Schools are in neighborhoods often. So, here's our situation in South Littleton. If the school systems that, we're, we're gonna do something different, sell that site off, whatever, oh, we have institutional on the map. So...
Sounds so institutional.
So...
See, the church is institutional in that map as well.
Yes.
So, one approach that we do in the majority of communities we work with is, don't have an institutional category. This, the church that's in the South Park area, we do have the, it's, the category we're using is suburban business park, because South Park is that very much kind of a campus atmosphere, very green, great landscaping. The church is included partly because it's under the South Park umbrella for practical terms, but it's part of that atmosphere, it's part of that business park. That church is going egg busting towards, but if that went away for some reason, and we call it out as institutional, no, it's, it's a business park. So, that's one example. There's the school that's on Mineral, that's in the South Park area, but the Presbyterian Church up north that's on Bellevue, it's on corridor Federal and Bellevue, not Federal, it's further. That's, that's a great example. If that church were to move, go away, it's in institutional on the map.
Let's talk about, let's use Heritage example. I can't see it by the map, is Heritage in a, does Heritage have a zoning designation?
Right now, R1.
It's R1. So, if they sell off, and somebody comes in, wants to do, you know, 82 houses on that site, the city and we would look at, okay, what's the underlying zoning, what's the surrounding neighborhood? It's R1. Good luck with the 82 homes. So, there'd probably be a brick wall right off the bat for anybody wanting to, to, you know, do a fifth acre, yeah, a rendering plant or a fifth acre lots for houses.
But institutional would convey either a public use, a school, or some type of assembly type activity like court, library, churches of course. So, where I was going is, we started to put an institutional category on those uses, like this building, churches, and I want to get your feedback that we might go the direction we do more often than not of, no, if it's on corridor, put it in commercial, if it's in the middle of a neighborhood, put it in residential. It's not the use that's on the ground today, but it's also to say, it's in a residential neighborhood, it needs to be sensitive to that, it needs to match the suburban character in this case, urban character, if it's in the downtown area, that's an institutional use, so...
Well, here's another thought on that. Don't throw apples at me, tomatoes or whatever. For example, Mission Hills Church that you're just pointing at. Well, that's, that is an example of a church that was up a little bit further north, and it did move down to that center. And what I want to bring up though, is that that's a prime commercial piece of ground or it used to be, it could have been. And again, because I, I'm sorry I hurt on this revenue thing, but I'm not, but when you give up those uses for a nonprofit organization, you know, that, that's another thing, you're giving up revenue for government and citizens. And so, putting an institutional label on those types of uses then would keep that door open, wouldn't it?
Yeah, it will.
To keep it a, a nonprofit type, because that's an example of an area that is booming business-wise. There's a medical park there, it's a whole commercial.
Yeah, institutional uses at churches, an independent school system that decides where to put campuses, highly unpredictable, where they might land and put a facility, even the city, in the city, one has to think about space needs, who knows where that might end up, but, so, on the zoning side, as you say, we have cities we work with that have a public institutional zoning category, so it needs to be on the future land use map. So, zoning, most cities don't have that. So, as you say, Heritage is in R1.
This is CA probably, so, I'm trying to put in a rendering plant on this site because of the underlying zoning, which is the ultimate protection, the basic protection, let's call it.
Well, and the, the text that goes along with the map talks about that public institutional uses should match the character of the area, including a public works yard. It's a public works yard. If it's near a neighborhood, it should be incredibly screened. At some point, that'd be the best location. We actually put, because there's not heavy industry in Littleton, in cities, there will be an industrial category in the map, we often put treatment plants, public works yards, things like that in industrial. Don't care that it's a public use, it's an industrial activity in nature, and in terms of needing to screen it, just like a manufacturing activity. So, again, it's what Brett was getting at last night, that not that use is entirely put aside, but it's de-emphasizing, just focusing use, character, character.
I think what you're saying makes complete sense. I mean, it's just like the church that we just had come before us, if, and it is, if for chance, which hopefully never, it went away, they can only stick with the residential around it, and the same zoning around it, it doesn't make sense to leave an area vulnerable with our whole purpose of trying to keep the character you're discussing.
Yeah, and the one community that we worked with recently that has a public institutional zoning category, if it's a new church to town, they better get a little change to go to public institutional zoning. That's a fight, because it could be traffic, it could be Sunday activity, I don't want that near my neighborhood. That's interesting, because you gotta be careful where you're just active, so...
So, if, so, if, if Heritage is R1, and what is Goddard? That's similar surrounding...
Zoning wise.
Residential, so that's also R1.
Goddard.
So, that's consistent, so that's also consistent.
It's R1 on that, on that side of the screen there, you can see that, it's got R1.
Yeah, it says R1.
Right above.
Is it low?
It's right above Windham Pond on the left.
Scroll to the left, she's right on.
Very, very low. Oh, yeah.
Right above.
Yeah, so it's consistent with Heritage, so...
Yeah. But, where there's a school on, say if there was a school, or there are schools friendly, near Broadway, Littleton High School. If that went away for some reason, wouldn't that likely be a commercial property?
What's that zoning, just for curiosity?
So, it's R1.
R1, okay.
Yeah, and that's not, that's not the best example, because it's a bit off the corridor.
But it's, it's surrounded by RE on one side and commercial on the other, so that's unique.
That requires some massaging to get that to work and get everybody to be happy.
If it went on the market, I could see somebody grabbing that piece and dividing it up, and like, maybe the east piece is residential, west is commercial.
But it, our defense is...
The map would say institutional.
Wasn't there earth, to the west of it?
The PD, PD overland.
Just to the west of Littleton High School?
R5 site.
So, I know we're, we're talking kind of abstractly, but what I would suggest is, we will not put institutional on the next draft of the map. We'll show if a site's on a major roadway, we'll show it as commercial, but you'll have the existing land use map to compare, and you know where a lot of these schools and things are, but just see that, okay, there's a school there today, there's a church there today, there's a public facility, but it's, it's not called out as public. And what we do actually on the future land use map is label those as landmarks. Yes, it's a, it's a destination, it's a place people go in the community, but in terms of land use, it's, we're thinking down the road if land use changed.
You know, that's weird, isn't it? That R5, isn't that still part of Littleton High School?
It looks like it is.
Like a parking lot on the west.
Seems if we wanted to apply the institutional future land use, that we plan to establish some criteria by which we do that. They say it's churches as an institution, you know, is it churches that have some sort of landmark value within the city that are, and maybe if required, maybe outreach, where it's like, okay, the neighborhood is identified, it is critical to the character of that neighborhood, so then you're sort of protecting an institutional type of neighborhood, as opposed to ones that you're not so sure, couldn't blend into the surrounding, imply the adjacent land use to it. But they would have to be, it seems like criteria. That's, that's a scenario, another, I know everybody's been trying to get their arms around the neighborhood conservation, it's on our list. One thing I mentioned was, the neighborhood conservation zoning often flows from a neighborhood-focused planning effort, very grassroots, and we've had, and, and I mentioned that when you get to the zoning, the purpose statement for that neighborhood-specific zoning could go on for several pages, because it kind of brings in the main points of the planning effort. But we've had cases where a historic church as an anchor of a neighborhood is called out, that as long as the church is viable, we don't want that to go away, so it's captured in the neighborhood conservation zoning. That that's part of that zoning, that neighborhood is, protect that church at all costs, that, that use, that focus of the neighborhood.
So, are you saying that would be done at a different level, neighborhood conservation, as opposed to future land use citywide?
It, it could be. In other words, we might not put a neighborhood conservation on this map, we opted, oh, hopefully, but maybe two years from now, a neighborhood, city does a neighborhood planning effort, and a recommendation that comes out of that is to do neighborhood-specific zoning, that neighborhood for historic reasons, or whatever, walkability, it's a unique neighborhood. And then, at that point, the plan might, the map might change to show a different designation, do zoning treatment might come forward. That's another point I wanted to make tonight, because this came up in discussion earlier today. I know we're all on this timeline, to get to October and have a new conference of plan. I look at these plans as like a budget. Yeah, you shouldn't be changing your plan every week, it's meant to be a long-term view, but you could change it three months from now, you could change it in six months, world keeps turning, and so, it's probably not going to be a perfect plan in October, and there's no problem with three months from now thinking, okay, some, a development has been proposed, something we hadn't thought about, these plans could be amended, so, I just wanted to get that thought out there, that, yeah, it should be a, a long-term direction and indication of what you want to be as a city. Buddy, can you...
Truly looking at that.
And I've been involved with the planning commission, two or three times, we've done some tweaks, house cleaning we called it, we didn't set new policy in the comp plan, but we just kind of cleaned it up a little bit.
And, and this will kind of close the circle on the point about all the numbers. When you go into a zoning discussion immediately after a planning effort, and you have that level of discussions, yeah, you absolutely might circle back from a policy standpoint, that we made some decisions about the specifics of the zoning that we now need to capture in the plan. So, that's another reason the plan might be tweaked here from now, to do some, some house painting of things.
We're not going to make a decision tonight on this, or a recommendation, unless somebody wants to, we can move on to number two.
There was just one other thing I wanted to ask about, number one, because you were talking about, do we need all of them, is there tweaking that needs to be done? And, you know, looking at the RE and the R1 being so close, and yet, for you guys, that Kenny and Keith, you always think of RE closer to an acre, it, it seems like with RE and one being so close, more definition or combination would be suitable potentially there.
This is a good example, the, the conference plan, not getting into that level of discussion, but the, in the zoning work, we're involved, model what's out there, model the set of parcels that you have to work with in an area, if an area was planted, so how does .61 relate to the spectrum of lots in that zoning designation right now? There're going to be some larger, some smaller, what's the median, what's the distribution? What's the smallest, what's the largest? And think about if somebody came in and wanted to subdivide or combine lots, what are the implications of that? From a, starting with minimum lot size, that's one consideration, then you get into setbacks and all the other things. So, more of a zoning discussion, but, you know, the plan, having an estate category on the map, and you have an estate category in your zoning, I think that's more, the policy and direction of the comp plan is, yes, that's going to be there. That's a pattern that's been established, people value that, so now it's protecting that on the zoning side.
The value of creeping into a little bit of the zoning issues to be decided in the future is that you can look at those and then double back, as we go forward, we double back and, and check premises in the comp plan, and so, hopefully, we, we're not amending every three months into perpetuity here. We have a more solid comp plan because we've looked at some of the future zoning issues, tried to address them now.
And, you know, the fact of the matter in Littleton is, the zoning has been in place for a long time, and a lot of development has happened, so, how far is the mismatch between the zoning and what's actually on the ground? Not to, you know, compare to cities that it's all about framing what can happen with the future land use, this is just, it makes sense with what has happened.
Is that where the RE came from, at .61, just historic?
I figure that's just trying to be close to two-thirds of an acre. I don't think there's any magic there.
List's out, square footage as well, it has acres.
Probably around over...
Yeah, I'm just like, do the math, do the math, great. So, I think we, this GIS that we have now, we can't even do like an inventory of, you know, how, what's the, how many lots do we have in R1, how many lots, what's the lot size? We can do something like that now.
And then, yeah, whether zoning categories actually make sense for what's over.
Yes, right, I mean, just what Gary's saying, right. Is there zoning code even working for you now? No.
But, on this particular issue of minimum lot size, that's probably the most dramatic example you could use. Take your biggest lot in that category, could it be subdivided because there's a small enough minimum lot size?
That could be a whole study session, and go through examples, one of the districts, you got an oddball large lot in a R1, R3, or wherever.
So, how much...
Things is the pattern set until, guess what, there's an application.
So, RS is not that big of a thing in here?
Yeah.
With A1, see one right in the middle there?
I was thinking if it shows up, that it's on the west. Yeah, there's one.
One right there, off of, is that... I don't really see too much.
What about to the south? Past Enzer?
Looks like a pretty rare beast.
Go through all pieces.
Even more so than A1. I think they're, they're sick of it. So, really, I mean, this whole paper is talking just about estate and RS, but really, RS is just like one-tenth of anything in, one-tenth of one percent of anything, you know, that...
But if I recall those lots, that's actually an example, when we talk about setbacks, those lots, is that Windermere where it was, the RS?
I can't see exactly where it was.
So, three or four lots in a row there, and those houses are pretty close to the street, is the 25, I'm upset, probably.
So, let's get into number two, because it talks about it. It's with the minimum yard deaths in, in all these, A1, RS, or LRE, R1. What was interesting to me when I looked at it today, every one of these districts has this, regardless of the lot, you know, 10 acres, five acres, .5 acres, have... has this, regardless of the lot, you know, 10 acres, five acres, point five acres have the same front setback, the same side setback.
Like the car.
It's like, I called it a, you know, we're, our zoning official laid it out, you know, sleep at the switch, lazy. So you've got a 10 acre and you could put a house or barn five feet away from your side property line on 10 acres. It's preposterous.
Well, in early, early zoning, early last century, setbacks were primarily for potential road winding. It's when cars get, and at some point as we got to suburbia age, it was for the old ones, the front yard, same car lengths in the driveway. So it got to more, instead of 10, it was more like 20, 25. But that's the point. As Brett showed last night, it's you start to look across these different districts that even by name are conveying, it's supposed to be a certain atmosphere, estate versus suburban. They're all the same, including to 10 acre agricultural. So front yard setback, absolutely in the state area, but in suburban, that was the point we made on the existing land use. In so many areas of Littleton, homes are built fairly close to the street and there's a generous backyard where it's larger lots. But that's why you get that packed driveway with now three cars in some cases, three car wide driveways and the garage is that much closer to the street. It just, even in a larger lot neighborhood with good amount of landscaping, tree cover, that's what you see. See those garages and cars along the street. So, so definitely in a state and ag, you would, you would think, you know, there's ag properties where out in the country you see a home that, that looks like a typical yard in a city, it's pretty close to the street. But then the ag property goes on forever behind it. But yeah, then there's rural areas where you don't even see homes, you just see a driveway or over the hill. Can't remember how.
Chambers Farm is kind of a good example of that. You know, that when Bowles was a dirt road, Chambers Farm was put in, there was nothing around there really. There hadn't been development in the area. So what do you do? You build your farmhouse close to the road because when a wagon comes by, hey, how you doing? So it's a psychological change versus that development turn of the century versus now.
Isn't that a cost issue too with utilities? I mean, as further back you go, I always, you know, am I always amazed when you drive out in the country, the house is right up against the road and running utilities too because they're in the street.
Right, to a big.
Yeah, it costs a lot of money.
That's probably one of it.
So the uniform setback is a red flag just when you see that in a zoning board.
Across, you know, 10 acres to half acre, that, that's a red flag. The other thing I was thinking of when I looked at this today is I think a lot of assumptions setting up setbacks were based on bungalow homes and, and the 60s ranch style homes. And now we've got scrape offs, pop tops, two-story, what have you. And, you know, 30 foot highs have any, we don't have any bolt planes. So you could have a facade that's 30 feet high, five feet away from your neighbor.
Yeah, there's a couple of communities in our area, Houston, that are affluent cities. In both cases, two thirds of their housing has been torn down and rebuilt.
Yes.
So they talk about canyon streets. I mean, it's, you really feel enclosed when it's not meant to be an urban area where you want enclosure like in a downtown.
Caneys, like in Denver, it's side to side canyons, five foot, well, they're like fifth acre lots or less.
So that was that point as I've made previous talks about building envelope. Brett mentioned that last night. You know, you really got to take that building envelope height as well. There we are. Not just the setbacks, but also 3D, how high.
That's a little, you don't show the side setbacks there at, you probably need to change that drawing a little bit.
Five feet?
They're in there.
Well, it's five feet on one side, 10 feet on the other. They look pretty close to me.
So this kind of gets.
I thought this was a great exhibit last night about how your character could work in terms of the street frontage. I was just pointing out, I think it's Shadycroft Link in, you know, the area that's more residential estate or Shadycroft Drive, even though there's a 25 foot front yard setback, almost all of those homes are well recessed. Having some standard that talks about averaging at some point in the future to preserve that character.
The average.
Good direction. Yeah, it seems like a good direction. If we're looking to preserve kind of those open characters of the suburban and the state.
I mentioned another part is you could do a, you can do the average or you can do, you can't be any further back than the furthest back house to either side, or you can't be any closer than the closest house to either side. Another way of controlling existing character.
You just got to, got to control for the outliers, the ones that are way off, that will throw off the average.
Yeah, you'd have to have special, there you go.
And that's what's happened down at the moment now. Because we established the average setback and now it's so varied, it's changing. So I'm kind of hearing that's more to an average setback of what's already there rather than set setbacks.
Ask that question?
As a policy.
Look at the setbacks, yes.
Of not having a distinct number, but more of a character based average.
As long as it doesn't encroach in the sense like we've been doing downtown, we're averaged and then another one comes up and the average, it keeps moving. If we can just fix that average without it moving and encroaching that.
Depending on the character of the area. Some of the areas of downtown, it may be appropriate for it to inch forward like that.
Yes, but let's set it so what we wanted as opposed to having this dynamic movement that changes things willy nilly, that might not be where we wanted to go.
Liberally planned through PDOs that were appropriately considered through public hearings. So I'd say willy nilly.
I will stick to my willy nilly.
We talked about the front though, the, you know, the sides and the rear. I could see just having, here's the standards, you know, whatever, 10 foot either side or five 10 like we have now. The rear is, you know, minimum, front is more critical, I think, than the size of it. It's nice not to have, you know, three pages of rules just on setbacks. Maybe you get into a quarter page with a drawing for the front elevation, but the rest could be pretty dry and straightforward.
With this topic of accessory dwellings being in the mix, if they're detached or if it's a smaller lot, smaller home and add on an accessory room or part of the house, you got to be sensitive about setbacks, especially if there's, it goes to two-story or higher roof line. It's, in other words, you know, you have your rules for accessory, you know, storage building or garage, but when it becomes an extension of the house because it's an accessory dwelling unit, if we go down that path, you got to think about those things getting close to property lines.
Well, if you have your standard setbacks for the house, you could have the standard, you could have the same setbacks for the ADU. We don't have, we don't allow detached accessory dwellings currently in Littleton.
Yeah, and we're up. That building, nobody's ever built anything that far back, so they don't think about it. You could build, build.
Sure.
Not that one, but the previous one, it's so much bigger. Nobody's ever built a main structure that far back in the backyard.
But your lot, you know, you get into lot coverage then and that's where you could, you could handle something like that along with setbacks. It's a combination of two things.
And that's what any accessory discussion in the comp plan, we need to talk about, not numbers, but that we need to be sensitive to coverage, to height, do any add-on. And then appearance too. If it's interiors of the house, but it, you know, sees some wacky add-ons to the house. And that's what the neighbors see from the back or the side.
That could certainly be important as we move into the, sort of the preservation areas. Because it could be that Cornerstone Park becomes desirable enough that it's the next Wash Park, which is an area that's been completely transformed by scrape offs and people building as big, big hand to the bulk plane a lot by Denver. That's transition from these 1920s cottage style homes to massive modern homes and something to consider as we get into that area. And if we go to.
So that particular building envelope, that's a, taken is, is showing like.
That's what zoning looks like.
30% of space is not showing.
Yeah, there's something wrong with that.
Yeah, he did picture, he did say in the presentation that it wasn't necessarily considering the minimum open space requirement. Littleton may have a 50% open space requirement.
But if he just went by setback.
Just going.
Just by setback, then, but then would that be trumped by the open space requirement?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I think it was after its coverage because of how he outlined the other houses.
By the way, an interesting caveat is, I've neglected in the past, is, is footprint includes auto-related driveways. Nowhere else have I seen that, but it's in Littleton. So you have to say if you've got a 50 foot limit on, on footprint, that includes the house, outbuildings, garages, and driveway.
But that is essential to character. So when you had your last meeting a few weeks ago, that issue was coming up and you mentioned in your notes sidewalks, a paved patio. Because when we work in parts of the country where flooding is job one, flood control, any impervious surface, you got to think about when it's put up across the city that if everybody puts a three car driveway, a paved patio back. In my city, in other cities, we, we pay a fee, hopefully based on impervious coverage. They went out and entered it.
In Littleton, we're, we don't count sidewalks or patios. It's just auto-related hard surface.
Right, okay. So then you see some creative stuff go on. Oh yeah, it's a sidewalk, but hmm, there's a car tire part of it every day.
I said a 10 foot wide sidewalk, yeah.
And then that old design of the, the grass strip down the millow drive. Some people hate them, some people love them. It's a certain feel in the neighborhood. Or sidewalks.
Creeping into number three, that's kind of.
Yes.
Yep. Enough as much more to add. Anybody have anything they want to add to number three?
Yeah, this is, you know, a lot of these were more about state and residential because of that, where we were in the process of presenting the categories, but this is so essential in the downtown area, that surface parking.
50% like in the, in my R1 district, it's pretty generous even if you add in the driveways. You can do a lot with what's left of house structure.
Yeah, you know, it's those, it's that transition to smaller lots because of the history of closer to the street. One image I showed last month was when that third, you extend the driveway sideways to add a third width. If everybody on the street does that, it's a different look. Three cars out in front of every house potentially because everybody's got their garage full with the cars on.
It's a junk park.
I think there's some creative ways to address the surface too in terms of lot impact. And maybe we could explore, this is the compliance, maybe even beyond that, but the idea of green roofs, which may not apply at residential scale, maybe commercial, impervious pavements for driveways and things like that. There's, so there may be opportunities to incentivize uses like that to deuce footprint. I think it was kind of an aha moment for me the last time we met and I couldn't make it last night, the discussion of going from auto, auto urban to suburban. I've always, suburban having a negative connotation, you know, especially if you're from urban areas, like, oh, you're suburbs.
Yeah, we were trying to distinguish suburbia. Kind of has the connotation.
I think the description in terms of the land coverage, impervious and landscape surfacing is saying, okay, well, we need a better balance of that to soften up, to, to really make it feel more like it should be if we wanted to work without necessarily reducing the ability to have same types of homes and businesses that we have. So it's looking at those impervious surfaces outside, building, top of the building. Creative ways to solution this.
You were in the, you're landscaping. Littleton doesn't, doesn't even address impervious surfaces. It wasn't invented back when our code was formed. But let's say, you know, you were the head building official and somebody gave impervious surfaces, would you allow them then to increase their building footprint or that's, or is it strictly?
I've seen that done elsewhere. I think Gary's point in Houston where they charge for, I think you're in the Houston there, to, for, for stormwater purposes, they need to charge for that runoff, right? I was working in Phoenix or Paradise Valley Institute, that's a, experienced flooding where they had to find a way to reduce surfaces so they could reduce future flooding and damage. So it's not as acute an issue here as it is places, but there's good examples and precedents out there, how it can be.
But did they turn around and, you know, allow?
More height.
Allow more, more height or more print?
More density or more buildable, actually a larger footprint from the building in exchange for pervious pavements on the driveways and maybe some more quality retention areas on the site, or even contributing to a regional retention. Some of the incentives we do are reduce the landscaping, parking lot landscaping if it's, if it's permeable paving because the, the surface is going to be green. So you're not trying to offset that sea of concrete. Also, if you do, instead of doing medians, doing depressed medians, so the drainage is below grade instead of medians to send it to storms, it was aisle swells. So.
Anything else on three?
Seeing none.
What, the point here on the, when it gets to zoning is that's part of that modeling effort of what's on the ground. What is the real coverage today? And, and even if it's not uniform across the districts, it is still too close, you know, needs to be more variation so that a suburban area, especially commercial, really stands apart from more typical retail center with a fair amount of coverage.
Number four was the adequate buffering. How big a buffer, what would be permitted encouraged in the buffer? Just looking at these, these five larger lot zoning areas, my, my first thought was we've got setbacks. That, that takes care of the, that's the buffer. We need to have a buffer on a buffer. Or if you need to make the setbacks larger, as we're talking about maybe in the 10 acre pieces, then fine, do that. I don't know if we need to layer on, you know, more buffer.
I don't think so. What I was pointing out, I think it was last month, was in that state area in South Littleton, for example, some of the lots have even along the front property line or sides along the street, they have screening, you don't even see the house from some angles. It varies in parts of the country. In the east, northeast, you have stone walls on, low stone walls on property lines. In some parts of the country, Mexico, you see the, everybody puts the tall trees or their property in for protection. So there's different kind of buffers in different environments, but, so basically in some communities that are heavily large lot, they don't just want separation between homes. They don't want to see the homes next door. So that's built regulations that we're going to screen in every property lot. I don't think that's the case here. But if there were significant areas that still could go into a state level development, that might be the consideration. How far do you go with screening? I don't expect to see any new estate development in Littleton, I don't think, just with land values and the nature of the area.
I always wonder if 20 or 30 years from now, people will say half acre lots, three acre lots, are you crazy? I mean, what, what were they thinking back then? Or, or it could be, it's so valuable, people even wanted more. Who, who knows what, what the next generation's going to think of large lots or small lots.
And at the end of the day, that's the point of the character. This is the lots may evolve and the house look type may evolve, but, or even if the character evolves, but if it's South Littleton. is, is South Littleton, this estate, open, very open character for a fair amount of time still.
Or that could be all for Littleton someday, huh? Rezone everything, downzone everything to RS. Any other thoughts on buffering?
It seems like the property owners pretty much take care of themselves, they'll go ahead and invest, if they have a big property like that, they'll go ahead and put in that those plants and, and trees and edges to give themselves that privacy, so they can walk around in shorts and not worry about gawking at them.
And you're in a part of the world where people may not, they're, they want the long view, they want their view at the property line.
Right, or even the view towards the east is valuable in some respects, you know, it's not as coveted as the, as the mountain view, but, yeah, there's, there's situations like Kyle's ranch, you know, got their, I mean, Grant Ranch got their block into, towards Sheridan, I'm a property owner there, put a big mountain, and planted big trees, and made an article in the New York Times, what's the price of a view, was the article, and do that, they lost their view, so.
Of course, when they build a place, they plug somebody else's view further to the east.
Right.
So it's, it's only the last development that has a, that there's a view problem.
You know, the next one, getting into landscaping and tree preservation, it's, I mentioned defensive suburban last month, just because so much of the city is what it is, was built in that character, it's, to me, it's expansion of driveways and loss of trees in the front, and, and to some extent on the sides, is what you'll lose the suburban feel over time. Now, trees are going to die off, but, and I frankly have not dug into that part of the zoning, if there's tree replacement requirements and credits and all the typical things, but.
I don't know if you're a landscaper.
Talked last session a little bit about the whole concept of sort of natural landscaping, I mean, a lot of these trees look great, but they're not exactly native to part of the world, and the population growth and the pressure on water resources and so forth and so on, sufficient landscaping and tree planning, should, should this move along a tack of sort of saying that native species are preferred over non-native species from the standpoint of water conservation and, just, I guess, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to, you know, have a chunk of the upper Midwest right on the, the front range, part of the front range, you gotta maybe look a little bit more like the front range. I'm not saying trees are bad, everybody likes shade, I've got a lot of them on my house, but at the same point in time, it might be nice to emphasize native species and, and water conservation after being given, we're going to need more.
Yeah, the, the job one is the coverage aspect, surface coverage to maintain suburban, what the other part is, the nature of the landscape, and there, in Littleton, you see examples of use of rocks, for example, so, there's a spectrum, there's places we work where you will use zero scape, zero scape.
De-rocks out.
Or you will be incent, you'll be incentivized to use it, it's a benefit, so that's the discussion. I came into this work in Littleton thinking, not crisis, but I thought probably regionwide, really being sensitive about water, not so much, not so much in Littleton near term.
We've got a contract with Denver Water, so it's not, so then you pay the bill.
Which is.
Yeah.
Guess to be two thousand dollars a month for ordering.
Well, yeah, that, that will incentivize conservation.
But I think there's opportunity for conservation ethic and education, and, so, absolutely.
Jason, has Arapahoe County adopted landscaping standards, I mean, like species requirements or conservation requirements?
Yeah, the, the county does have landscaping standards, unfortunately, the plan list is woefully out of date, one of the preferred turf varieties is Kentucky bluegrass, which is not a good choice out there.
Water sucker.
So that tends to be one of the first comments the staff makes if someone proposes that, it's like.
Follow this.
Is that an athletic field that you're doing? Well, maybe you should consider it something that uses less water, and we're, you know, the landscape regulations this year for, to improve the zero scape, I will say that the water districts with their weeds tend to incentivize a more zero landscape, less water intense landscape, most of the time, see in commercial settings, people are putting in a lot, a lot of rock and ground cover, kind of, you know, native, native grass.
That's a good question, Jason, you set up these rules, and, and when a project goes in, and it's all pretty and nice, but how do you enforce it? You know, maintenance issues is, is my point being, you know, they, you put all these nice trees, and they just kind of die, you don't take care of them, it gets sloppy.
Yeah, that's something that I, I think every jurisdiction has to struggle with, and in my experience, it's often complaint-based, so if someone goes to the Walmart and says there's a bunch of dead trees here, then the zoning enforcement people go out and investigate that, but generally, the communities I've worked in tend to take a kind of light touch on enforcement, where they'll rely on the complaint rather than going out looking for violations of landscape trees in the parking lot, a lot of times, they do struggle with parking lots, I think a lot of communities have those landscape islands a little too narrow for climate.
And the plant materials are too large for those to.
Yeah.
And on our side of things, it's an indicator of where that ranks in priority in a community, when you see lack of maintenance, communities, that's an absolute priority, you see it, it's Disney level landscape maintenance, and then places, there is other things that are, our playground equipment needs attention, there's other priorities, and landscape maintenance is down the list.
That's one of, one of the, the point I would make, you know, you set up these rules and regulations, whether it's landscaping, heights or whatever, is it enforceable? If it's not, then you have to question the rule.
Brett made the point about, you know, complaints of less landscaping last night, just to follow through on the regulatory side, don't get me started on public side, you know, I just hate to see beautification projects that are, rather than not maintained, just think it's awful message.
Anything else on this? We're getting close to seven.
Yes, we're at seven.
We're, what, five or seven? Do we want to go beyond that, we're not too far in, or people want to go, we goes off seven, what do you think? Any thoughts?
Maybe get through the first page.
Let's try to do the first page.
They get through one side of it.
It just, I, I never saw the second page, I never flipped it over, nice. Like your style.
We said at the get-go, we were not getting through all of this this evening, so.
Number six is pretty interesting, potential architecture design standards in suburban residential character areas to minimize auto-oriented elements, you want to start the discussion?
Similar to landscaping maintenance, is, is this a, enough of an issue to break? In some communities, residential design standards is absolutely a must, it's there, and there's the term anti-monotony that homes on a block or in a neighborhood have to vary, so you don't get cookie cutter architecture in a whole neighborhood, but that can be the facade treatment, varying the setback of garage in front, but this is more just that out-front garage issue, so it's, it's also the, if homes are scraped, rebuilt, or the front, say, is, is redone where the garage is, as I say, just so much of Littleton was built that way with the garages out front, so it's more the issue of if you get into a rebuild wave, this would be the opportunity to change the pattern, if you're fine with it, or it's not high on the list, don't want a regulator.
Well, some municipalities, you give, maybe, more than, if you have a two-car garage, a tight lot, let's say R3 or something, that, the garage has to be setback from the facade of the habitable space, like the front porch or the front living room or something, has to be setback, three cars, forget it, if you want a three-car, you got to figure out a way to put it to the side or something.
I don't know if you're a fan of when you turn the garage sideways and do your driveway that way, it's a, it's a different treatment to have the garage out front, maybe not be as visible.
Oh, R3, you know, then R3 are, we wouldn't be able to do that, the lot's too big enough. You have to have lot size, but there, so there are ways of undulating a facade and setting back garage.
And of course, we showed you the most extreme example, examples we know of in Littleton.
Driveway?
You don't even see them, back there somewhere, and somebody that's in Leadership Academy group right now, has lived in the neighborhood that's near Aspen Grove, the neighborhood you can only access through, uh, uh, Aspen Grove, so, he said he's lived there for a long time, never sees neighbors because they're registeredized in the garage, and can't see them again, so, it, it, I mean, talk about not just physical design, but the character of the neighborhood, how you interact.
Let's say you want to put a three-car garage, you could do a tandem garage, there's, there's ways around it, still keep the, like a two-car max or something, or the, you can't have a big giant door, it's got to be two doors, it's a simple thing, that could improve it.
But even on the image I used last month, where there were some, you obviously had to see the newer concrete to three width, we work with some cities that city engineer or whoever, code, would not allow tree to remain in the middle of the driveway, there were multiple examples on that street where it's a three-width driveway, but there's a tree in the middle, works just fine for me, as long as you don't run into it, that's your issue.
I think one thing that really came out when we were talking with Kathleen last time is, the community really wants that suburban feel, it might also be a question going back to the community saying, okay, you want this feel, this is what that means to really fill out, because you're, you're right, you're not going to change the neighborhoods that are already there, but it's, if something's redeveloped, that's when you would put these, these things into place to, to obtain that, but if it's truly, the community wants this, that's something to, we definitely want to have there in that consideration, otherwise you won't be able to maintain what we're being told the community wants.
How do you, how do you balance that, because that starts increasing the building cost, how do you balance that with our desire to have affordability?
Again, it's like, okay, you say you want this, this is what that means, you know, I mean, we can all say, hey, I'd love to have five acres, that beautiful house, but you have to come down to, what does that mean, you know, it's, it's more than just a wish list and a desire, where's the practicality versus what you want?
And actually, the street you're looking at, I think, kind of spoke a little bit about the garage design and driveway design, those were, you know, looked like they were mid-century homes, you know, when people tended to have fewer cars, and the garages on most of those reflected that, where it didn't dominate the house, but I would wager there's absolutely nothing zoning that would prevent one of those houses from converting to all garage in the front if they wanted to right now.
Right.
And I'd say, maybe that's not the direction we'd like to go.
Where's that balance?
The biggest detriment to that sort of continuous green feel on the sides of the street are the numerous curb cuts and line curb cuts, and it also interrupts the sidewalk, so it's not as good of a pedestrian environment. I have seen communities where they have a maximum width of the driveway at the curb cut, and then once you get into the property, you can widen or lengthen, just to keep the space.
Is that your house?
No, it's, it's just down, it's across the street.
Across the street from me. Or that's one of those tricks.
Go to check out your house.
Uh, adjourned, go ahead, turn around.
That's, that there is Councilman Valdez's.
That's, uh, Councilman Valdez's house, keep turning.
Code enforcement.
Hey, who designed that great front porch?
Work backwards.
All right, go down two houses, keep going, you can't complain about my driveway, keep going, one more.
No, he's, he's playing now.
Keep one more, there's my driveway, side-loaded garage, and a house that's tilted on the site, mid-century modern.
Yep.
So we were having a little side conversation, that, going back to the coverage, it's just a percentage of the lot right now, I think, you could reshape that to focus on the front yard, that only a certain amount of the front yard can be covered, leave the house alone, so the example was, yeah, having the wider garage or driveway only in front of the garage, then it narrows down, but that's one, I was saying, that's one of those tricks, when you've got to stay within the coverage limit, start messing with driveway design.
I mean, the elimination of front loaded in some neighborhoods would be nice, but have you ever seen a community try to apply, incentivize, introduction of alleys where they don't have them?
On read.
Really hard to do.
Where a block is taking that.
So you're advocating alleys across the city?
In certain neighborhoods, I mean, they work really well.
No, I mean, in the future, okay.
If it was a large.
We get to.
So.
It's not going to be now.
You know, when you're talking about potential design standards or how to maintain character, any one of these, I'm kind of getting on the spot here, what would a policy in the comprehensive plan look like that would address what we're talking about?
It would be without the numbers, you know, it might be, if you were going down the path of controlling how much of the front facade could be garage, might just say it can't be the majority of the facade, can't be, or the half the width of the.
Yeah, percentage, less than half.
With that, let zoning work out the details, coverage by itself could, and lot size could limit, you know, you can't do three-car garages on some lots just because of the width or the space to work.
And RS, hell, you can have a four-car garage if you want, outbuilding with more cars, it's big.
You know, these complaints, we're supposed to be looking at twenty years plus down the road, between smaller household sizes theoretically in the future, and we're going to be driving fewer hours, I was thinking about some of the neighborhoods near Catching Park, where absolutely, one, if, if a garage, one-car garage, fairly close to the street, but there's all the room in the world to park cars on the street, so that was the pattern there, when people started firing more cars, they parked on the street, that, I mean, the street itself, they introduced auto-urban feeling, all that pavement, now you got cars on the street, so.
Yeah, I think some of these garages were converted to extra living space, so.
Yeah, right.
For homes in the area that have no garage at all, where they converted the attached garage and then built a detached on the alley.
Or no alley, they still convert it, and everybody.
It just parks on the street.
You just park on the street or in the driveway, keep the driveway budding into family room, former garage, yeah.
My sense is this is not a regulated house design community, or it might happen through more plant development type cases that on a site, a specific site, I get into that.
Or you start getting to, to neighborhoods.
Yeah.
A neighborhood character, and how does that start? You can see, just in this room, you have different neighborhood character.
Oh, I thought you were saying we had a bunch of characters.
Let's touch on number seven, and then we'll, we'll call it page complete.
Good call.
Potential expansions, sooner or later, we're, city tried to deal with, we're going to be dealing with it, the planning commission, it's Mills Council, ADUs, it's going to come back, percentage of building, I'm not sure, okay, side yards, again, I think setbacks take care of size.
Well, it's another one of those spectrum things where you can. Well, it's another one of those spectrum things where you can either just stick with your setbacks, side setbacks, and it's a variance.
But I think the setbacks need to change, because across the board, they're, they're nothing.
No, I was going to say on that issue of add-ons or ADUs, we absolutely have worked with communities where that can only go back, so it's behind the house.
Yes.
But you've got today's setbacks on the side, where the only way you can approach it to that is get a variance, so something's got to be hardship. Or you can have some flexibility provision, and you can go so far into it for certain reasons, ADU, and there would be parameters. So in other words, it's a, you don't have to get a variance for allowing some flexibility. And it might be the averaging, I mean, there's different ways that that's been done. So the standing original side setbacks might not be second, or nope, we're sticking with that. That's, so that's more of the zoning discussion. But I think the point in the comp plan is, you'll, is the, excuse me, the defensive suburban idea, that in areas where it's theoretically not as much side separation as in some other communities, in suburban areas, all the more reason you don't want to approach and lose that, that having some space from your neighbors is a difference from being in a more dense neighborhood.
Yeah.
You know, when you think of ADUs, and we're talking about character, you have to be concerned about turning a neighborhood into more auto-urban ADUs. I think that would have to be a big part of the discussion to where those would be allowed, especially, again, having a community that keeps saying they want to stay suburban. Not to say that you couldn't have areas where you could perhaps allow that where neighborhoods are, but that is definitely something that would change the character to an auto.
Brett started into that list last night, but we do ADU regs, everything's a spectrum. I mean, the list can be a page of zoning ordinance, of car must be in the back, can't be visible, you don't get a separate house number, you don't get a separate mailbox, you get, you don't get a separate meter. He mentioned cases where you do have a separate meter, but when you do some of those things, it means you can't really rent it out, it's got to be somebody you know, because the mail's going through your house and they're paying the utilities through you.
Water sewer.
So it's, it's the elderly parent, or roomer and kid, or something.
That mother-in-law house, is what they used to be called.
There'll be something in the comp plan that mentions it, whether you don't want it, or maybe in denser areas, there'll be some mention, I would think, with neighbor or citizen input.
Kind of in housing section.
Right, right.
How do we address the affordability issues? What are some different ways that we can do that? What is it, what, what can it look like?
I agree with that, because, I mean, we've been sort of parenthetically not addressing this issue for 10 years. And it, and it, we need to finally get some resolution to this, as far as what, conceptually, as far as a comp plan construction is concerned, what's applicable.
Are, are there any over garage apartments in Littleton, legal or illegal? Yes, there are. But is that permitted? There are. This is one off of Littleton Boulevard, that did work on a little bit. Be curious about that.
I think you can add to kitchen, like you can have the extra room, but you can't have the kitchen. Don't quote me on that, but I think that's...
There, they're legal, but a number of homes on my block started out as duplexes, where the basement was actually an apartment, and then as people have come in to kind of flip them, they've gone from, you know, two family units to one family unit. Although there's also just one duplex that's legal on my street. I think to some of the points about character that Robin was making, ADUs are something that the city should definitely consider, but have to be cognizant of the different character. You know, if you're looking at the estate and suburban residential, maybe it's appropriate to have something that looks like a carriage house that is purely an ADU. You know, you've got the barns, you've got two acres, you have the room for those sorts of things, if they have design standards, and then maybe the ones over the garage are more appropriate in areas that are alley loaded and have those detached garages. Once you get into the weeds of the zoning, maybe there's a thing where you talk about, if you never create a condo out of it, it always has to be under the same ownership.
You know, and you've talked about the affordability too, you know, adding ideas of an ADU, but what if instead of looking at ADUs, like up in Loveland where they have homes that are very tight together and they're alley loaded, they're smaller homes and they're much more affordable, so there's different ways of looking at affordability homes to try to maintain the character within that neighborhood.
Anyone tell you, right, they have quite a few ADUs, and they look like they're part of homes on those long, narrow lots, and from the alley, it looks like a detached garage, but it's not. And then the actual house, that there's, it's two separate units.
It's a million dollars.
It's a million dollars.
For this baby.
If I could do it, we could. Yes, but it was a different look, but...
Well, the same can be said for, you know, multi units within a suburb. You were just talking about the basement, there, I've seen a couple over in unincorporated, no, no, it's a ten year old, where they actually did convert their basement into a separate unit, and they actually had access, that they somehow got permission, I guess, to dig. So they have like a garden level, or walkout, or whatever. And in one case, it's garden level. So anyway, I mean, I think we're probably going to see more and more of that with houses not being affordable. Plus our aging population.
But yes, not to diminish Robin's original point, you got to think about density, trash generation, city services, schools, if it really took off, city, you know, had another layer of population that wasn't there.
Yeah, and the demographics say we are going to have that population moving here over the next 20 years, and they need someplace to go. Our customers for the businesses, I mean, it's...
Yeah, absolutely.
More rooftop.
I want my daughter to have an ADU for me, okay? You do, I'm going to take care of me.
Who, what? Okay.
My daughter, yeah, my daughter's here.
Yeah.
Then a full discussion.
Preview of coming attractions, this will be a hot topic summer.
Yes, yes, and I do believe right now we do not have any public hearings scheduled for June, at least for our first meeting in June, so we don't want to do this again. Also wanted to discuss that it was not originally on the calendar, but Gary and Meredith, Gary and Meredith will be here in July now, so we have a regular scheduled meeting, I believe, on the 8th.
8th of, I'm sorry, July.
The 8th of July, so if you guys are around, we want to do the same thing again with Gary.
We talked about doing, piggybacking on, do a, do a regular meeting.
Yeah, if we had something on the agenda, yes.
This, this is working quite well, much better than, than the other one we, we talked about previously with council.
It looks like there's not a lot of pipeline for the next few months.
There is, we had kind of a low development applications. We're waiting on a lot of them to be resubmitted right now, so that's why we have some low, busy this fall.
I like doing this, having Gary here, because we have a lot of questions, and you answer them like that, and it helps us to reformulate thinking. It's so much more productive having your expertise here to guide us.
Yeah, since we weren't scheduled to be here in July, it's kind of floating, but we figure that July 8th is a good point between our other meetings in June and August. Yeah, just want to mention, I hear this discussion is, in a lot of cities, you'd just be looking at a map for future land use, and talking about, okay, residential goes here, cars now. Talking about what it's got to load, like in that all, it's character-wise, so that's the difference of character side of the discussion. And the preview of zoning, because it makes the connection better, I think, to start thinking about these two standards.
So homework-wise, if you guys go on the envision 10, we have kind of the, I'll call it the working, big, future areas for discussion, future and use outlook. So homework, take a look, roll it over, and bring back some ideas to discuss.
Areas for discussion, that, that map?
That was the one that's up there. It's one of the earlier ones, but...
I had a few extra ones that I wanted to add in.
Okay.
Like, well, but it had to go, but there were a few that are pretty important. Mike Railstation for being one of them, that was just left off, that's, that's a biggie.
The mineral one?
Yes. Well, to be honest, you know, the mobile home park at the intersection of Santa Fe County Line slash C-470.
Well, Hearst.
Yeah, it's an interesting area.
When I'm at the neighborhood pool, and people ask where I'm from, I always say, "Well," it goes over a real well.
Excellent. All right, do you want to adjourn the meeting?
I'm sorry?
Adjourn the meeting?
And any homework, we didn't get to page two. If you have any comments or thoughts, shoot them to staff.
Yes, please.
I already wrote some things down, so it's...
Do we get these emailed? Because I don't know that everybody...
I'm sorry?
Can we get it?
Sure.
Because I don't think everybody can email them.
An email sheet, a list of questions.
I am, I'm not in the office tomorrow, but I can email Tuesday. Is that okay? Or can I actually go? Do I have your own copy? I'm happy to go.
Come on zoning.
Do you want me to make you a hard copy right now? I'll email it to everyone. Can you just email, is that be correct? Yeah, I will do that.
We are adjourned?
Thanks.
Slam the pizza.
Tasty pizza.